Okay, good morning. Welcome to spring break week, I guess it is. I come through, I live in Castle Rock, come through town, nobody around. I love spring break. It was really easy to get through. So we got the budget management. We'll just go right into it. Kathy?
Okay, Kathy Funk-Maxter, Finance Director. Today I'm going to let Suzie do the presentation. We have risk management and they have three different funds and so she will do the the presentation. She's getting some experience.
Okay.
Suzie Moon, Finance Manager. So our first fund is Risk Management. At the beginning of every year, Risk Management will bill the various departments for insurance charges. So you'll see that Goods and Services have brought in just over three million so far this year. About three million of that dollar amount is made up of those internal service billings. And we've brought in about forty-three hundred dollars in miscellaneous revenue. This is data polled through March.
Is this the the fund we were talking last week and the other commissioners were over at a Risk Managers, the conference, and they were talking about increases of like twenty-five percent? Is this the one you'd see that in that buildings will be going out to the different departments?
Yes. This is the one where we pay all of our assessments to the risk pool from this fund.
So
and then we turn around.
Looking at here, we're they've already paid for like twenty-five? Okay.
Yes.
So but twenty-six, twenty-seven, we could see some.
We could see some additional increases and we've seen, ever since I've been here, we've seen twenty, thirty percent increases.
Yeah, it just doesn't get any better, does it?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And Kathy, does this, does that number include the payment that you and I talked about? Is that included in here already? We already paid them for that premium?
Yes, we've we've already paid for the premium for twelve months. And then we're going to pay for another premium here this month in April for what's called the stub stub year because they're trying to get us on a January to December timeframe as opposed to an October to September timeframe. And so we will be paying the rest of our premium for twenty-five. And then we won't be paying another premium premium until January of twenty-six. And we will be doing our billings for the departments in January of twenty-six.
And and did I understand them to say that because we're doing that, we're actually getting three months for a rate, or it's they're going to pay it, so we're not paying for fifteen months on that one?
Um, we, in October, we paid for a full twelve months, October of twenty-four. And then for this year, for twenty-five, we'll pay three months here this month for that stub year.
That's what that payment is?
Yeah.
So we're not out of the paper fifteen months?
Right. But when when we present our financials, they're based upon the accrual basis. So the expense for that premium shows up for twelve months in our financials.
When do we expect that twenty-five percent increase? When does that kick in? In the three months or is that we're waiting for that notice?
Yeah, we're waiting for that notice and they they informed us of that in the last meeting, the risk pool meeting that we'll be getting those in the month of October of twenty-five. And we'll be expected to pay those assessments in January of twenty-six.
Okay.
So for this, so for this calendar year, after we make this stub year payment, we won't have any more cash outflows for the risk pool until January of twenty-six. And that's when we'll do our next set of billings. But we need to, we're, we're going to be working on the budget very soon and so we have to anticipate based upon what they informed us at this last meeting that our rates, our assessments are going to go up again.
Yeah.
There's really no, I mean, I think it is what it is. There's not a lot of options out there, insurance. You know, and say they pointed out the risk pool to get where we're at now are using more companies because companies are wanting to take less risk.
They are, yeah. Yeah, I think they said that we are now at seven. Insurance companies, where before we were at two or three.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Suzie.
And so for expenses, you'll see that services have exceeded our target for the year so far, and that's because of that premium Kathy mentioned. That was about two million dollars that we paid at the beginning of this year. For transfers, we have, we have two transfers that we budgeted for. That was three hundred thousand going to the liability claims fund and then another five hundred and fifty thousand going to the general fund. The three hundred thousand, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was to help cover costs related to the annex and the restoration over there.
So it's possible some of that could come back? Yeah.
Um, I I wouldn't anticipate it. We've been based upon the number of open torque claims and liability claims we have. We increased, we used to be just putting a hundred thousand towards the liability claims fund as a transfer and we increased that to three hundred thousand because our deductible is a hundred thousand dollars per claim. And so basically, if you think about it, that's just three claims. And we have thirteen right now. I think that's the number Scott will update you on the number of torque claims and litigation claims that we have.
Okay.
So.
So moving on to industrial accident, so Goods and Services, that's another item that's billed out to the various departments for industrial accident insurance. So that's why that revenue amount has already exceeded our expected target for the year. And we are anticipating a budget amendment for miscellaneous revenues related to a return on insurance premiums related to twenty twenty-four. That amount will be about six thousand dollars. So we're anticipating that that budget amendment will be May twentieth. So we'll be coming forward in the next couple of weeks for a request for a public hearing. So on the expense side of this fund, so services, that's a large portion of that, about a hundred and twenty thousand is our workers' compensation, insurance premium. So that's why compared to our target, we've already exceeded it for the year. So our last fund, liability claims, so that revenue amount is the transfers in from the other fund mentioned. So these funds will help cover the costs related to the restoration at the annex. We do anticipate doing a budget amendment since we'll be trying to recover those funds and the cost related to the restoration. So that budget amendment would affect both revenues and expenses. Oh, I don't want the expense one. So services, so far we've spent about seventy-four thousand and that's all related to the restoration costs at the annex. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be seeing a budget amendment on the expense side for those additional costs.
And then they, like Suzie said, I just want to make sure that y'all are aware that we're going to put the call out for budget amendment for the second quarter and in about two weeks, we'll be coming forward with a request for a public hearing. And then that public hearing will be on May twentieth. So right, right towards the end of the second quarter. Or the middle of second quarter, basically.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Scott have some stuff? Did you have some stuff, Scott? This just seems weird. I think, I think tomorrow we'll just shift over and I'll just move on. We'll just be straight. That work at R A?
I'm easy.
Yeah.
Pick your poison.
Are we in this week? Okay. So if she's in tomorrow, just have her say it's free, free straight. Okay.
Scott, Scott Kaling, Risk Analyst. This presentation is to go over our performance for a month. I actually had made this into more of a quarterly report since we hadn't really presented for last February. So I thought maybe just clumping everything into one quarter. Excuse me.
Okay.
Um, just an update on the annex projects. We are, I had spoken with contractor last week and flooring is supposed to go in on the seventeenth and final walk with with them is on the twenty-first. Safety committees that we're trying to put in place have been delayed. We are trying to get that done at the end of this quarter. Unfortunately, we had missed that target. Our next goal is to have our first meeting at the end of April, early May. We are going to have three new committees, one here at the administration for safety, one at the HOJ and the, oh, I'm sorry, just two, just two, one at the administration building and one at the HOJ. Yeah, to also add that we already have, there's safety committees already present in Calhoun County. Each department typically has their own safety committee. Public Works has one. Juvenile, they all, they'll have their own safety committees. This is more just to make sure that we're covering all departments.
Okay.
Okay, everyone's favorite topic, workers' comp. So this is open claims current as of today. We had excuse me, we had at the very beginning of the year, twelve open claims. And then during this quarter, we had opened four new claims and we had closed six. So right now, currently we have ten open claims that we are currently working on. I had added another table to kind of break it down by time loss and medical only. And to kind of go over that is, so you have time loss, which is days away from work restricted or modified transferred. And five of our open claims right now fit in that category. I'm sorry, six of our open claims right now fit in that category. One claim is truly off work, employees not able to work, but the other four are modified duties. I'm sorry, two off work, four are modified duties. The medical only, we have four of. Those are, you know, they're went to the doctors and have a follow-up on Monday, kind of a thing. The one medical only that in that table that column says appeal, B I I A, is a claim that is going through the appeal process. And we are currently working with legal on that one. Many questions? Next slide, please. So this is just more of a graph to show what the claims were opened in in the in the first quarter. January, we had one, two in February and one, one in March, and we had closed the three in January and closed one in February and two in March.
Scott, I might be getting ahead of myself, but do we know what our average claim cost is?
Our average claim cost right now is around seven thousand dollars. That's current. Number of claims opened by year in quarter one, I had made this graph so that we can kind of show how we're doing previously to where we are now. We are in the right direction, so that's good. However, I'll talk about this a little bit more during the next couple of slides. I think there is some improvement that is needed. Next slide, please. Closed claims, this is same kind of thing. Typical, nothing extraordinary. So just to kind of throw a picture of what we had spent previously to what we had spent this quarter. We're just a little bit above what we spent last year in quarter one. Quarter one is from last year is, is kind of an interesting one because we had less claims. But those claims were more severe. So as the quarters go on, twenty twenty-four is going to show in the future quarters, they're going to show a higher percent of paid. So this quarter seems like it's, we're a little on the upside, but I believe, hopefully, knocking wood, that will be below last year's quarter paid. One item that I do think that we are missing is metrics for a safety picture. Metrics can be used to really give you a sense of where your direction is. I've used them previously in my other work and it's always, it was always a useful tool to see just a snapshot of where you're currently at. I don't believe metrics should be chased. I think they're, they should be used as a tool. So this metric is called the total recordable incident rate. And this is what LNI and WISHA for Washington State use to kind of show what companies, private and a public owned, what their safety picture looks like. So it's to represent how many injuries recordable you have per a hundred workers. So if you have five, just to say the number is five, then that means that you have five injured workers per a hundred employees. On the next line, it will show kind of a breakdown.
Before you go away from that, why, why is the forty hours times fifty weeks? Why not fifty-two weeks a year?
Two weeks for vacation.
Vacation. So that's a average of two weeks per vacation per per employee that they just plugged in there?
Yeah, it's, it, OSHA does this too. OSHA has their own metric. They're just a, it's kind of just a base number to have. And both of these metrics, the, the one that they use is called DART. It's kind of the same concept. So the base is just to show how many hours or how many employees were injured within a hundred hours or within a hundred employee hours. So that's, it's just a base number that OSHA and WISHA use.
And are these comparable industries to county employment?
Yeah, actually, on the next, on the next slide, I have that broken down just a little bit. So we, I was looking through on this, I first was going to use DART as a metric, which is days away restricted and transferred days. And that is just a metric to use that like Oregon OSHA uses. But obviously, we're not with OSHA, we're with LNI. So LNI has their own frequency. So on the average in twenty twenty-three, Washington State average for the local government agencies was five point three cases per one hundred full-time equivalent FTE workers. They don't have their metric out yet for twenty twenty-four, but I expect it to be pretty similar to twenty twenty-three. The national average was four point three, so Washington State as a whole has a higher injury rate than the national average. So in twenty twenty-four, I had calculated that our frequency was five point six. So that means five point six employees for every hundred FTEs. So it's, it's a little bit above Washington State. So there's an improvement that could definitely be made. I also calculated for the first quarter, typically that's not it's, it's kind of hard to do it that way because it's typically an annual number, but two point eight. And I don't really, I couldn't really find a metric for quarters.
Okay.
So. Yeah, any questions?
Well, I probably asked before, but does risk pool look at this stuff?
Risk pool is not.
Is it just a global thing? They don't like break down?
No, risk pool, the only thing that risk pool really gets involved with is well, we have, we have Gallagher that kind of assists us sometimes because there are excess. They help us with their excess policy. But other than that, yeah, they don't really get involved with workers' comp.
Yeah, the risk, the risk pool, our workers' comp is not included in the risk pool, so they don't calculate numbers for workers' comp. So.
Do they use metrics, just out of curiosity, to say, hey, Lewis is performing a little better, so their rate's going to be twenty-two percent. Calhoun is a little worse, they're going to be twenty-five. Do they do that type of thing?
Yeah, we, we, they calculate an actual claims factor for each and every county. And so actually, I could probably show you what our history of ours has been compared to the rest of the risk pool. We're, we actually improved ours last year. So.
I also, so to bring up Gallagher again, we had asked from our previous meeting to see what other counties are are doing and how much we're paying in workers' comp. And she's still collecting data on that. But yeah, I just wanted to give you an update that we are still looking into what we're paying.
Okay.
Any more questions on this? Okay. If you have any further questions on that, I know it's a little confusing. But if you have any further questions, you can just please reach out and I'll try my best to explain it better. So I also had another metric that I think is is actually, it's easily attainable. And its average days or claims are open. There is a distinct correlation between how long a claim is open to and how much we pay in that claim. So the sooner we close that claim, the less money we pay. So last year, we had an end of the year with a hundred and twenty-four days open. And I think it would be to have a five percent reduction at the end of this year to to last year's number and to improve on closing our claims faster.
So that's kind of an internal goal you guys are.
Yeah.
Improve that by five percent.
Yep. Yep, trying to save costs and administrative, just administrative costs alone would, I think, make a difference. All right, I had broken this out just by quarter for this, for new claims opened by department for Q one. So in twenty twenty-five, we had a reduction, so that's good from last year. Rhodes Administration had only one claim open in Q one. And that's compared to the three that they had opened last year. So right there is a good reduction. Also, we didn't have the coroners, juvenile detention, parks and rec and the clerk's office. So all in all, good. The typical departments that you would think would get a claim did. So also, that's also something I really want to look into is on risk class and department on claims. Departments that typically don't have the higher risk class typically don't have or don't, don't necessarily have the the opportunity to have the injuries because they're not in the the field that would be considered dangerous, like the sheriff's officer, the jail or Rhodes Administration. So I am looking into the departments that did have those specific injuries that you typically wouldn't see. And trying to see where we can approve on that from last year. and trying to see where we can approve on that from last year. All right, now this is liability claims, this is, so we're switching from workers' comp claims to um our toward liability claims. So beginning, I broke this down by month. Shelley typically has this presentation. So I just did it from March first, which we had thirteen on. No new claims and we hadn't closed any claims um since March first. And so we ended with uh thirteen claims ending March thirty first.
Would this be the category where uh past juvenile stuff comes, comes into?
Yes.
Have we seen some more of that?
Not new ones, not since last time we've met.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the fact that they took the statute of limitation on? Would that be in this?
Yes.
That is?
Yes, yeah. And I think we have a um meeting on that, I think, this month.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know you talked, other, other counties are seeing quite a few of those coming in, we were feeling fairly decent at, at, at one time.
Yep, yeah.
Scott, one question I do have for you. When we were at the, at the conference, one of the things that they mentioned is that the size of the claims are going to, are growing. They're bigger claims and they're going to continue to get bigger. And the only thing that we can really do to mitigate that is to reduce the number of claims that we have as a county. And I'm sure Kathy was there, so she knows that's a conversation that we're going to have to have moving forward is to look, find areas that we can do something to reduce the number of claims that we have, so we're proactive in that area. Because it's a, it's not, it's not getting better as far as the, the size of the claims and the number of claims that are being filed against counties.
I agree.
Forward, yeah.
I agree. I think Shelley would also agree to that as well.
Yeah.
I guess you were here. Okay, and any other questions?
Well, I just, I just want to uh express my uh appreciation. I've watched you uh guys work over this, this past year, maybe a little longer, year and a half or whatever it's been. And you keep looking for, and we heard about it today, little things to try and find small improvements. And it doesn't surprise me with Shelley, because I've known Shelley quite a while, but I think that's, that's commendable on your part. Because a lot of times people stay with the status quo and they just keep going and it's fine. And to keep looking, even if they're small improvements over time, it, it helps. So I, I thank you for that, for that direction.
Appreciate that, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any miscellaneous? Take break till you didn't have anything? Okay, then um we can recess till ten when we're done. Okay.
Okay, we're back. We're going through a gender review of public works.
So good morning, Susan Eugenous County Engineer. If I can find my notes. We have quite a few items in front of you tomorrow. The first is a call for bid for road surfacing materials. This is our bid. We go out annually for rock materials. So this includes things like riprap, shoulder rock, and we award to all responsible bidders. And they are chosen at the time of a job based on cost and proximity to the work site. So if it's a rock pit in the tutel area, when you're doing a job up there, even if it's 50 cents a cubic yard more expensive, because of the travel time, it ends up being cheaper. So that's this process. We do this annually and it is a year-long contract.
So every bidder that bids it is, we consider a responsible bidder. We're going to bring them on board and then depending on where the job is, is who we use?
Yes, and you know, we can buy tons and tons a year. We're next to nothing. So it's just one of those, we buy as we need. So the next item is the call for bids. Everybody's, I'm glad you're seated for the South Cloverdale Road and the South Cloverdale Road intersection improvements. So we are finally going out to bid for that. The total project estimate is also worth sitting down for $9,935,000. So this is being funded with a combination of county road funds, crab rap funds, FHW ASTPBG grant to fund, and some ARPA funds to fund this project. About 3.6 from the road fund. So the project itself will widen the roadway, excuse me, with six-foot wide shoulders. There's two large culverts that are being replaced. One is going to be a steel arch and the other is going to be an open bottom concrete material. We're fixing numerous curves and we're fixing the Confor South Cloverdale intersection. As you approach it, it has poor sight distance. So we're cutting Confor down for a couple of feet to improve the sight distance when you get to the intersection. As part of this project, they are going to be relocating Kalama's waterline in the areas where it conflicts with the road changes. So it's quite a big project. We anticipate that it's going to end up being a two-year project. So we'll start this summer and we'll probably have work going on until 2026.
We're out of our county 3.6 is what we're estimating is what we're going to cost.
Yes, so.
It's frustrating. I think I kind of know, you probably know where Cloverdale is better. You know, they've talked about an overpass somewhere in that area?
So this is before this. This project runs from Todd Road to Confor. So, and the overpass area is further south on Cloverdale than this.
I didn't know if this would be improvements to this road that if you ever had an overpass, it'd all be set to go type thing. But it sounds like it's a little bit different.
Yeah, it is before that. It is the section that people drive. It is also the section people drive when they're trying to bypass Green Mountain. It is the intersection of South Cloverdale and Todd Road is where the fire, there's a fire station there. And then a little further along the South Cloverdale is the county's Kalama shop.
When they shut down I-5 for whatever reasons, does this help getting around or not really?
It, not really. It will just give it, if somebody has an accident on that portion, you can shift traffic enough to keep it flowing both ways.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the consent agenda is the 2024 annual certifications for the county road administration boards. Documents that we went through for the work we completed in 2024. This is just the documents that we signed last week. It includes how we spent all of the money in the road fund and fish passage data. And that we didn't have a diversion or levy shift. So that's what those documents are to get it into the record. The next item is the project closeout, contract completion for the emergency sewer gravity line repair on International Way. The, that was the emergency where the sewer line was nicked and we needed to go out and. that was the emergency where the sewer line was nicked and we needed to go out and repair the sewer line. We had advanced excavating specialists complete the work. Their original estimate was over $100,000. The actual bill was $52,668. So this included bypassing the sewer for the weekend while they were ordering parts and their rental equipment, and then the actual repair and road restoration. So they came in, they did the work. We were pleased with the work. Came in way under what they were estimating, but they wanted to make sure we had a number just in case, because that area down there, the soils can go on you rapidly. So that's why the difference between what they estimated and what they came in. So.
And are we in the process of any retribution for the guys that nicked it?
So I'm working with the attorney on what we can do on that. So I don't have anything right now. A good answer. And the final item that we had on the motion is actually they're rescinding the emergency resolution.
Should be pretty quick day tomorrow.
Whenever we say that something weird comes up.
Yeah. Is your, I don't know what spring break is like in college. Is your daughter off?
So my daughter's spring break was several weeks ago. My.
It was already passed.
Yeah, hers is past. My, my son's still in high school and he's off this week. So.
Any other questions? Perfect.
Thank you.
We'll put your name on one of those chairs. Thanks, Susan. I'm gonna ask tomorrow for public input. Cause I've started to get a couple of emails and I don't know if you guys have or not on the hiring of non-citizens for law enforcement. So I want to try and get ahead of that and maybe start getting some input. Cause I'm already getting asked, what's the county, what, what direction are we going to take? Right?
Yep.
Know that's passed in the Senate.
Hundred percent. I, so it tells me it's going to whizz through the house and.
Have you seen the Washington gun law video that the attorney does? Locks through that he doesn't understand how they're doing this because in the state constitution, as well as in the federal constitution, non-citizens cannot carry a gun. They cannot. So they can't be law enforcement, armed law enforcement.
Oh, never even thought of that, but, but yeah, exactly.
So he went, he goes, he does a great video on it, details that whole thing out about restrictions on non-citizens in this country for being armed. He said he doesn't understand what the heck the legislature is thinking. And you know, it makes good sense that if they're not thinking, they're, they're going through this knee jerk reaction. Well, we don't have enough police officers or we can't get people to, to sign up to be a police officer. So let's just hire anybody.
You think it's, you know, and I, I get we're not having enough, but when I think back of, you know, we've taken powers away from our police officers. We've added liabilities to them and the fact that they can be sued easier and, and be convicted of things. I mean, they don't have some of the protections they used to have. So is it, have we shot ourselves in the foot? I mean, that's, that's what I think.
I agree with you. Absolutely. That's exactly what has happened. When they, when they removed the protection for a police officer who's trying to do his job. And, and there's already methods and laws there to prosecute him if he does lately, does something wrong.
Right.
So when they remove those barriers and they lowered it to such a degree that now that person is going to be liable if he sneezes the wrong direction. Why would you want to be a police officer anymore?
Yeah.
Why would you want to step?
So I think we've created a, it feels like we've created a problem and we're trying to solve it by something that has nothing to do with the problem.
Right.
We, uh, when I was at the risk pool, there was a county that is battling their sheriff on this. The commissioners are saying you cannot do this. And the sheriff is saying, I'm going to, because they can't, they're not having a hard time finding deputies. Hire people.
Right.
And, uh, and you know, now that it's gone through the legislature and it's going to, it's going to get passed, unfortunately.
That, and I think that's a discussion we need to have. I, I, well, you've heard me say, I, I, I try to respect every elected position and let them do, but this may be one that we might have to have a real conversation on. I, I, and maybe Brad's on board, doesn't want to do that. We haven't had an issue. We've been pretty good about.
Yeah.
About hiring people. So I don't think it'll be an issue here, but I know the public is going to ask us for something.
I have no doubt.
Well, the, the mistake that I, I learned that I make often is to think that people who are elected in Olympia are constitutional. I just assume that, and they're not. They don't care.
Not even close.
Well, it's just, that's just like the T or the Tiff. How, how did anybody's staff members, I don't know how many staff, how does, how many staff members does Jeff Wilson have? Somebody somewhere, when that, when a bill comes up, why aren't they looking to see if it fits in the constitution? If it's, if there's prohibitive language in the constitution that says you can't do this, why are they even introducing a bill like that on the floor? Why isn't even getting talked about?
It shouldn't.
It should have been dead before, before anybody even finished letting the ink dry. Yeah. And they're, they're, they're doing this knee jerk reaction going, well, geez, we'll just do this. And they don't give it.
Figure it out later.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's backwards. I totally agree with you. Okay. So, and if there's anything else you want to bring, or I just thought I've seen enough now that we probably should start having that conversation with the public.
Yeah, I got emails this weekend over.
Yeah. Okay.
I got face to face, uh, discussion over that three times between last week and this week.
Okay.
It's, it's a pretty hot subject.
All right.
Understandably so.
Yeah. No HR? O H R.
Okay.
Anything else? If nothing, we will adjourn till tomorrow morning. Thank you.
So this person says a lawful permanent resident can carry a gun with all proper licenses.
He says what?
This is an anonymous attendee, a lawful permanent resident can carry a gun with all the proper licenses.